Seven oh two, I'm gonna call the committee of order.
Alderman Borman.
Yes.
Alderman Hudson.
Here.
Alderman Motley.
Here.
Alderman Wilkins.
President.
Alderman Rogers.
President.
Alderman Magley.
All right, so the pledge of allegiance next.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can the commission approve the consent agenda as amended? Second.
Wait, did...
There was a correction that we made on it. I think on the first settlement, my point says Janet Tho- or Janet Borman. And should say Janet Thompson and Linda Borman.
So it's a mashup?
I don't want to be Janet, and I'm sure she don't want to be me.
Did you catch that?
Of course.
After I pointed it out.
Let me approve the consent agenda as amended. Second.
Okay, consent agenda is altered, has been brought forth as seconded. Call of favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So now we're all with the minutes of prior meetings? Okay, we'll move on to the other. Okay, counts payable over $1,250, which was $604,481.32.
Can the commission approve the counts payable over $1,250 and a grand total amount of $604,481.32? Second.
Counts payable have been approved as seconded. Call of favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now it's time for comments from the citizens. I'd look for any citizen to come up and speak. Please state your name and where to...
Susan Jackson. Susan Jackson. First, I want to thank you all for serving our community. I know this is a meeting about the prepay pump issue, but I'd like to, sorry, I'd like to ask and speak on for anti-kettering law in Central area. I have some visuals here that I'd like to show. Once you see them, then I will...
What's your address, Mel?
Six oh five North Claudio Street. That little guy's name is Toby. And for six years, I've drove past that little guy. And at first, I just thought he was in a pen. But then I've come to find out that he's on a log chain around a tree inside of him. Help was offered to the family, I offered to help with fencing, and even rehome the dog. But they're resistant to that. And that is unacceptable, that an animal should have to live like that. And that's all over the city. And an ordinance would help in three ways. It would save that little guy and others like it. It would stop the police from being called to barking dogs in the middle of the night. And the citation revenue gathered would help our community. So I am asking that you consider an ordinance for anti-kettering like Columbia and surrounding communities. I thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anything in our existing ordinance that would prevent a situation like that? There's more than one. I see one on Bradford I drive by every day.
That's my knowledge. Let's talk about something we could look into, and see what we could do.
I'm interested to see what Columbia's...
I mean, should I have a look at that?
I thank you all so very much.
Let's do that. Start there, okay? Does that make sense? We'll do that.
I thank you, sir.
Yeah, we'll update everybody when we're done with this, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you for your...
It was very nice to meet you, and thank you for your service.
You have a great night.
You too.
The next we have is public comment regarding the prepay at the pump. Okay, I want to make the motion to close the public comments from the citizens.
Is there any more?
Anybody else have any more?
Well, we have, and most are here for prepay or pay at the pump.
Yeah, we'll have a separate section for the prepay or pay at the pump.
Is it time for my comment?
Absolutely. Come right, it's open to you.
Oh, okay. My name's Tim Miller. I'm new to Central area. My wife and I moved here about two years ago. The thing we really like about Central area is we ride bikes. This town is flat. Flat, flat, okay? But the bad part of it is, is you may be riding on pavement, and unbeknownst why, you just suddenly draw a gravel road. And we thought, first time this happened. We have done road out of the city limits of Central area. But further checking, no, we have not. We're still in the city limits. Apparently, we have ridden into the twilight zone. And this is the oddest thing. I've asked the people who live here for a long time, why some of the streets are not paved, you know? I've lived in half a dozen towns in my life. I have never run into this kind of a problem. And I just can't seem to get a sensible answer as to why Columbia is a federal fair. And it looks like it goes from south to north until you get about a quarter of a mile from Daniel Chance, and then you're out in the country. But no, you're not, okay? And the other one is, we go down, and this is the one that was really funny because I had my son drive it. You go down Ivy Lane, you go down there, and lo and behold, draw a gravel road. Except you're still in the city limits. I had my son would drive this thing in his car, and he was driving down there. You should see the look on his face. He said, "My God, Dad, what's this? What's going on?" I said, "Son, I don't know. I don't know." And then we got this other new one out here, Columbia or Campbell Street. And I don't know whether they're gonna pave that or not. So I'm trying to find out, why, why you don't pave your streets? Is there some good reason why you don't do this?
Hold your thought for a second. Can I get your address for her to put on the... What's your address?
Seven twenty-one North Rollins. Apartment five.
Excellent, excellent feedback.
Okay. Then I got another question about another street that is paved, paved nicely, but it has no name. It's not named. I asked the person who lives around the corner from it, why it's not named. He says, "Well, nobody lives on this street. No one ever delivers mail to it, so they didn't bother to name the street." Okay, but there's power lines on this street. If they were blew down, and I want to report it to the department...
Where's it located?
It's, it's, it's one block north of Daniel Chance. Okay, it's the first south, street south of the high school. There's three streets that run into there. East Mount and West Wind.
Yeah, that's Bryson Drive, isn't it?
Yes.
They're like, well, here's a football field.
Yeah.
And here's Daniel Chance. So it's one of these streets?
It's Bryson.
It's the street that West Wind, yeah, right there. There's a street there.
East Bryson Drive.
It's Bryson.
It's not marked.
We...
No, we can mark it.
Okay.
East Bryson Drive, so you know, we can get some signs.
All right, then the one other thing, this has nothing to do with the town, I guess, but there's a lake out west of town called...
Cry City?
Yeah. I've asked the people what the three cities that are involved in that. I don't even get two. I like just, just a simple curiosity. I like going to the third towns. Sturgeon and Central area, and what?
Paulsville.
Paulsville? Okay, thank you. All right, that's all I got for us.
Well, that was good. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. I will get an answer maybe?
We'll respond back to you on the roads and the ground.
Why, why they're not paved?
Yeah.
I mean, we have some answers now.
You can probably do that.
Yeah, I can tell you.
We've got a couple answers.
Or...
You can go ahead.
You can press it, yeah.
Should I stay for the answer?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and answer right now.
All right.
Well, you're on roll. We want to keep it going here, man. I like it.
Campbell Street was platted in, what, nineteen sixty's?
A long time ago.
A long time ago. So...
Wait a minute, Campbell Street was what?
Campbell Street was platted, it was actually platted, the subdivision there was platted many, many years ago. In the nineteen, we were in the nineteen sixty's, late nineteen sixty's, early nineteen seventy's.
I think it was later than that, but it's been quite a few years ago.
But it was platted under old regulations. And so when the developer went in to develop it, he didn't change any of those old plaques. The lots were the same. He was gonna keep them the same. And so it did go back and forth between the developer and the city. And he said that he did offer to...
Well, who's the name of the developer?
Well, Darren Evans is the one who built the houses there.
Yeah, but what's the name?
He wasn't the one who developed the lots originally.
Right.
They're no longer around.
But he's the one that built the current houses there.
Well, my understanding is sometimes the person who builds a subdivision is obligated to put in a paving road.
They built the gravel road, which was the only thing that was required at that time.
Well, don't you update your laws?
You do.
I'm gonna ask you this. Do the people who live on Campbell Street complain about it?
They have.
Have they been told that nothing's gonna be done, or what are they told?
Pretty much, pretty much. That's what they've been told.
They're gonna live on a gravel road the rest of their life?
Well, and they can volunteer to pay for the paving of it, or the city can tax bill them for paving it.
What about Ivy Lane? What's the problem with Ivy Lane?
Basically, the same thing. It's an old subdivision plaque that was done many, many years ago. And it was never paved at that time, but was never required to be.
It looks like that the houses on Ivy Lane, on the unpaid park, are fairly muted.
They are, they are.
Well, is it, are their real estate taxes lower because of that?
Yes.
Okay.
It affects their property values.
Okay.
They would like for the city to pay for it. They might raise their property values.
Well, no, that's not true, because when Chris was running for election, I didn't know who to vote for. And you said something about infrastructure, right? Roads came to mind, right?
Sure, sure.
So I went down there, and I knocked on the people's home, and I asked them, "Is this road paved yet?" "Well, no." I said, "Well, the guy's running for mayor, he said something about infrastructure. Would it help if I voted Chris Cox instead of the other guy?" He said, "Well, it doesn't matter."
They don't care.
Well, that's the problem. See, that's the problem I'm having. Because the citizens of the community don't care, really don't even why I should.
Right.
But it's mostly curiosity.
And Columbia Street was paved at one time. But after they started building that subdivision out there with the construction that was going on, the street fell apart.
All right.
And it will, that would be...
What is it that I give to my son, and he wants to know, what a simple answer to give my son, why the road is likely to be paved?
We're growing so fast, the realtors and contractors are grabbing any piece of property they can to get a house up. That's, and we're running out...
But wouldn't it be wrong to insist that the people are building, putting a concrete road before...
We do have that requirement now.
We have that requirement now.
For new stuff.
For the new stuff. When that was platted, like he said, okay? It fell through the cracks a little bit. There was something we could have done in the past. We'd have thought about it probably. You're not thinking about it. And so the developer is expected to leave the roads to an expected level.
You know what it looks like to an outsider, sir? They like what you call developers, what I would call euphemism for corruption. It's probably been going on with that for a long time.
Well, I...
I don't understand why the citizens are so indifferent to this. I have, I live in at least six different cities. I've never lived in a town that didn't pave the streets.
I had a lot of people bring up the gravel roads in town, okay? And I had to...
What is the reason Columbia Street can't be finished down at Daniel Chance?
It will be. There are plans to pave it.
Soon as, soon as they sell those lots that run across in front of that, that it'll be, the road will be put in at that point. They have to. It's in the newer block.
Well, you've got a problem on Lakeview, west of the recreation center. They're nothing but cornfield on either side, but the road is paved all the way out to the highway. Where did you get the money to do that?
I don't know. That was...
I mean, there's no developers involved in that.
Well, as she was saying to you about the one on Campbell Street, if I'm correct, I don't want to overstep what we're saying, but we're planning on, that will be paved in the future or not, no?
No, no. I mean, I mean, we can, we can look at it, we can talk about it, but there are no plans to pave that one.
I believe, I was told, and tell me if I'm wrong, I was told that the contractor offered to pave it, but not curb and gutter.
He offered to pave it, but not up to current standards. And if it was going to be paved, planning and zoning wanted it paved to current standards.
Well, what would be, what would be the new regulation if I decided I want to build a subdivision somewhere inside the city? Before I can even do it, would I have to agree to putting paved roads?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Curb and gutter.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely.
But these were done prior to those regulations, until they failed.
Well, how far back did those regulations?
Way prior, like in the sixties, seventies.
Quite a few years ago. If I could get to my air, that would come up like a...
That's what they call grandfathering, right?
Right.
I've been in labor use a long time, and grandfathering is when you've got a special problem you can't solve. You gotta make an exception, right? These people are grandfathered, but it doesn't stay that way forever. Eventually, these people die, and the problem is solved. Are you a grandfather, and gonna solve the problem down on Ivy Lane?
No.
No, it's not.
No?
No.
No, that's why, that's why we turn corrections.
That's, that's going to have to take either an action of this council to decide to pave it and benefit those people, or the city can tax bill those people for their portion of the...
Well, I could say I don't live there, or don't.
Well, that's something that we'll have to determine. And the road, you know, the gravel roads and all the roads in town are of consideration, and what we're doing, and what we're gonna do with them.
Well, let me ask the people who live here. Do you think it's normal in your town to have streets that are suddenly not paved? Raise your hand if you think that's normal.
It is here in town.
In this town.
I've been around the state a lot, and there are several towns that have different varying levels of pavement, pavement on their streets.
Name. Can you name one?
Battlefield.
Who or name?
Battlefield.
Battlefield?
Battlefield, down near, yeah, near Springfield. There's other, there's other towns, small towns around.
You gotta answer your questions, didn't it?
We'll, we'll let you know by...
It really doesn't, no.
Well...
I really can't tell my son why Ivy Lane did not pave, other than...
It's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement. I mean, they were able to not have to do that. Now, I would say this. There won't be any new ones. There won't be any new ones that are grabbed. Because we've looked through, I think, to make sure that there's none of those grandfathered in, and we could do something to close the loophole.
Well, you said Columbia Street is gonna be paved up at Daniel Chance?
Yes.
Absolutely. When they finish, when they sell those lots and they develop that...
Why can't they do the same for Ivy Lane?
It was because it's a done deal. They're already in, and it was grandfathered in under the old, old plaques, and the old ordinances. And what was expected from developers totally different from what was expected from the developer then, and what they were supposed to be finished doing now. Back then, in the sixties, at fifties, I'm gonna guess, there's no question, it was okay to have a gravel road. But that's not acceptable here today, and that's all we can do moving forward. You know what I'm saying? I mean, that's all we can do. And make sure, guarding against any of those hanging out there where somebody wants to develop, that it could happen.
You need a name for the street that has no name?
It isn't. It's Bryson Drive. It's Bryson Drive.
Bryson Drive?
Yeah, Bryson Drive. And we're gonna put us, we're gonna get some signs out there. Yes.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you for your input.
All right.
I hope I'm half that far when I... I'm half as peppy as that guy was that whole day. I appreciate your feedback. I really did. That being said, we're gonna move on now. Still learning this job a little bit, but we're gonna move on to the public comment regarding prepaid, prepaid or paid to pump ordinance. And we'd welcome anybody that would want to come up and speak on that for that. Everybody here for that?
We did.
I work with Casey's, and I think the prepaid would be good because a lot of the drive-offs, my employees are paying out of their pocket so they don't get in trouble for it.
You're in favor. Could you state your name? Could you step up and state your name and where you live?
Samantha Riley. I live in Dixie, Missouri.
Well, that's fine. And so you, you're an employee, and you're in favor?
I'm the store manager.
You're the store manager?
Yes.
Okay. And you're...
Samantha.
And so you all pay out of, the people have to pay out of pocket when it grows up?
Yeah, because our policy states for any drive-off, they get a rider for it. And to save their jobs, they pay out of pocket for it.
That's interesting. I don't know why corporation wouldn't, wouldn't make them already do that to protect their own interest, but they don't.
Makes no sense to me either.
Okay. Thank you for your feedback on that. I appreciate you coming tonight to wish your opinion on that.
I did receive a response in writing from Eagle Stop, and they are in favor of this bill. And then the chief, Chief Biasson, I met with...
Yeah, welcome to...
From DC's. He's not overly in favor of it, but then at the end said, whatever we decide, he'll be fine with it.
Break time. I know one time we were waiting on break time, but nobody ever...
They never called back.
They never contacted the city administrator back again. She attempted to. We don't have an...
Last time I talked to her, she said she was okay with it.
Yeah, I talked to the manager, and the manager was okay with it. Like I said, we didn't have any report. Anything further on that? Because that's, the next thing on the agenda is to vote on that. Anybody else on that? Okay, we'll move on to the action agenda. Citizen finance, we have none, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, that moves us on to our legal side of things. Add an Article four, Section sixteen dash thirty-nine to the City Code titled Business Regulations Requiring Prepayment or Pre-approval of Gas or Industrial Fuel Ordinance. So it's a bill. Would you, would you mind reading it there? Yeah, here. You never told, don't you laugh? I'm giving you a couple of leads. If you're the same, it'll work against me if I don't do it, so...
All right. So do I? I don't want to start.
Uh, still number, please, and don't...
Okay. Okay. Bill number?
Two thousand three hundred.
All right. Move that bill number three thousand, or, sorry, two thousand three hundred be given its first reading by title only.
Bill two thousand three hundred has been read as seconded?
No.
Motion as seconded, excuse me. All those in favor?
Silence.
All opposed? Ordinance passes?
No, no, no. Didn't she read it the first time?
Won't she read it again?
She didn't read it all.
Oh, there it is. I might as well get off the hook again. I was having an easy time. I don't like that guy, man. He'll come back.
All right. Move that bill number two thousand three hundred.
Yeah, you have a bill number.
Sorry, guys. An ordinance adding Article four, Section sixteen dash thirty-nine to the City Code, the City Council's title, titled Business Regulations and Requiring Prepayment or Pre-approval of Gas and Industrial Fuel. Move that bill number two thousand three hundred be given its second reading by title only.
Second.
Been seconded to...
Both.
To the... You gotta read it again?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I mean, all opposed?
Okay. A little more time. Okay. Move that bill number...
Just read the title.
And ordinance adding Article four, Section sixteen dash thirty-nine to the City Code, the City Council's title, Business Regulations and Requiring Prepayment or Pre-approval of Gas and Industrial Fuel. Move that bill number three thousand three hundred be adopted by...
Second. Adopted, seconded by... All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'll need you to roll a call.
Alderman, Wilkins?
Four.
Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Motley?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
And Alderman Rogers?
One.
Bill number twenty-three hundred becomes ordinance number?
Thirty nineteen.
All right. So that probably makes you happy, I would guess. So good. Item two on the legal, adopting revised schedule of fines for central municipal court. Resolution. Bill number?
Twenty-three oh one.
Twenty-three oh one.
And just to give a quick insight while you guys are thinking about this, we are doing a revised fine schedule for a number of reasons, some of which is to enable the certain dismissal of certain tickets without having to necessitate people coming into court. For instance, if they can show proof of insurance to our clerks, instead of people having to actually make the trip into and taking part in our day, and just basically showing me the proof of insurance, and then I have to buy law, dismiss it. This will enable, hopefully, the process to move faster. We may also be looking at, just so you know, this is a current revised fine schedule. You may be looking at another one come July if ASCA, which is the Office of Supreme Court Administrators, requires us to adopt the ASCA fine schedule. So this one will be the current fine schedule unless and until the Supreme Court of the state of Missouri necessitates all municipalities to adopt the ASCA fine schedule. So we will know that in June. So if you guys have any questions, I know there's some kind of maybe interested votes, but I revised it. The judge reviewed it. I believe Chief Biass is taking a look at it as well, so...
You have some left, please read. Will you read it?
Sure. Move that bill number two three zero one be given its first and only reading by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
A resolution adopting a scheduled ordinance offenses under the authority of the Municipal Ordinance Foundation Bureau of Law that can be paid before court and the amount of fines imposed for such offenses. And when the bill number two-three zero one be adopted, will roll call vote?
Second.
The seconded, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, roll call please.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman, um, Motley?
Four.
Alderman Hudson?
Four.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alderman Magley?
Yep.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Bill two-three oh one passes, revolution number?
R dash nineteen dash ten.
I'm just looking at it too, okay. And number three on legal, the setting compensation for a certain city employee, uh, ordinance.
This would be, um, promoting this employee to assistant foreman position. It's something that we discussed about prior to the budget, uh, with the department heads and if the street department was able to get the fourth person, it's good to have that assistant foreman, as far as always stepped up and showing that they can do the job. So, we would like to move forward with this promotion with the board's approval.
There is a couple of words in there twice. On A, it says, it says add it twice.
Okay.
Alright, so, Councilman Rogers, would you read the?
Bill number?
Twenty-three oh two.
Move that bill number twenty-three oh two be given its first reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Bill number twenty-three oh two, an ordinance to fix the composition of a certain employee of the city of Centraia, Missouri. Move that bill number twenty-three oh two be given the second reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
An ordinance to fix the composition of certain employee, of a certain employee of the city of Centraia, Missouri. Move that bill number twenty-three oh two be adopted by roll call votes.
Second.
Second, uh, to be roll call vote then?
Alderman Hudson?
We have to say aye.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Just roll call.
Alderman Hudson?
Yes.
Alderman Motley? Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yeah.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Borman?
Yes.
Alright, ordinance number? Ordinance number?
Three oh two.
Number one is approved proposal from Viscous Sewer for sewer vein lining in the amount of forty-five thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty cents.
This is what we discussed last week, but just for the official minutes, we just need a motion.
I move the second proposal from Viscous Sewer for forty-five thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty cents.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item two of purchasing, approving the best proposal for a vehicle for the Centraia Police Department.
Just a little background on this. Uh, the chief was driving a truck provided by Ford Chevrolet. After the last purchase of a vehicle, which we, the state bid, Ford Chevrolet requested that we give that truck back, and they would no longer provide it to us for free. Um, so he has given the truck back, so we received quotes, uh, for a similar vehicle. We do have twenty-four thousand dollars budgeted for this, uh, in this year's budget. We were just purchasing it a little bit sooner than we thought we would be. We thought we would be purchasing it in January instead of right now, but it is budgeted. Um, so the chief got the three quotes. Don Brown Chevrolet, uh, has a state bid for Chevrolet. Joe Mokins Ford Lincoln has a state bid for Ford. So, we have similar models. And then we also received a bid from Ford Chevrolet. So, they're all very comparable. All, all three vehicles are comparable. Chevrolet is a Chevrolet Colorado and the Ford is Ford Ranger. I, we do have twenty-four thousand dollars budgeted. We did have a revenue for the car budget because we never know how much those are gonna bring. We're looking at about three thousand dollars that if, that the car that we're selling is going to bring. So, that would offset any overages on this.
If I might, the difference of being the, Don Brown and Joe Mokins are both eight weeks each times. Um, the one from Forest is actually an immediate delivery. They've got it in stock there.
At this point in time, you're without a vehicle until we replace it?
Or it will be. Get my own truck because there's gonna rain tomorrow.
Well, it's better than a Segway.
I might pay money to see.
You look good in a mope. Take it right out of your hand, okay, and, and the grab, you'll be alright.
Hate to say this, but as soon as I thought a Segway, I thought a mall house and I'm just saying.
So, what is the, Mokins does not have one in stock, right?
You won't, you won't have one in stock on, on a state bid, eight weeks. I, if you read down further, you can look at the things and I made them apples to apples, um, with options that were available. And, uh, I said, the, uh, the state bid ones, no matter how you look at it, they're all eight weeks.
But it's, but it's gonna be eight weeks, is that correct?
Correct.
How, when is by how much? If I'm looking at that once by what, uh, eighteen hundred bucks or so, what is it?
Forest.
For local versus, I'm just looking at them. I'm just trying to figure out what's, what this is.
Twelve hundred dollars.
Twelve hundred dollars.
Twelve hundred dollars, there was.
From the lowest.
There's a little above that.
Little over seven hundred dollars higher than the other show like Colorado.
Does it get a couple of them? I know that's been a running up.
Yeah, it does too. And to be, to be honest with you, it is just like the one on most of our, because there's white wings and I.
See here on the discussion.
I remember who made it too.
The only one has to be, the only one to say, the only one has vehicles, the person who just took the vehicle back earlier than previously committed.
Yes.
So, I'll make a motion. We go with Joe Mokins for twenty-four, seven, seven, eight.
Second.
Motion's been made to take Joe Mokins' bid and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
There are two people vote.
Oh, there are two people voting.
Alderman Wilkins?
Four.
Alderman, uh, Borman?
Yeah. Put an asterisk behind it.
Alderman Rogers?
Four.
Alderman Magley?
Yep.
Alderman Motley?
Yes.
Yes.
See, you got the same with all.
Next, the question was, Chief Bias, do we do now in eight weeks?
It's a double B.
I see yellow in your future.
I see mine. Alright, do we have any, uh, old business?
Oh, you got one.
Oh, uh, oh yeah.
Proven the purchase of UTV for the Public Works and Public Utilities Departments as discussed last week in last meeting.
So, I'm trying to find exactly what he found, so. Matt Rush, um, did do some research, called several places, um, local-ish, um, and they can't guarantee a used vehicle because they kind of move off the lot quickly. Um, so we would have to probably agree the purchase not to exceed a certain amount unless we wanted to look at going with a new vehicle, because I know that Mary talked to Matt about a new vehicle that had warranties, um, things like that. Do you wanna add that our, our Garrett truck is going to bring us in thirty-two thousand dollars. So.
Our, our discussion when I talked to, to Matt, we were talking that he was getting some used pricing back, uh, eight, nine thousand dollars versus other numbers. And I said, well, it depends on where we end up on used vehicle, it'll be good versus a new one with a warranty of two years and so forth. So, that was the discussion we were having. And that was before we had any numbers or anything figured out what that looked like.
So, the, out in the new ones, the Polaris is the lowest priced ones. That would meet the needs from what we're looking at?
Yeah.
And we make a motion in the board with the new Polaris.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to, uh, accept the proposal for, for YC Powersports, uh, for Polaris five sev-, uh, five seventy, uh, ten thousand eight hundred dollars.
No, that's a starting at ten eight.
Yeah, that's what starts.
That's what is the price? It's ten eight?
Yeah, ten eight is what they start at and then they go up from there, but I think that ten eight would get us what we need.
Yeah.
I suspect the youth don't get us what we need.
Not good for that either.
So, we have a motion to second for YC Powersports to provide, uh, a new Polaris five seventy, uh, at the ten thousand eight hundred dollars, just what we're hoping on yesterday.
Is that gonna be a maximum of ten thousand eight hundred or is that?
Plus delivery taxes and other associated fees.
Cause it says thirty, not ten thousand eight hundreds.
So, should we do it not to exceed?
You may have to have the forty-six dollars.
That's what I thought, was I thought that's what this was for.
I didn't say not to exceed and put a dollar figure on it, so.
Just now we draw an emotion.
I withdraw my motion.
Motion put draw, uh, to accept YC Powersports.
We have a price with the features that we was wanting. Do you know what that is?
Then come back and look through.
No, but we can come back with that.
Yeah, whatever that.
Unless you.
Taylor, I thought you said that this is.
That, that, that is what he was told, that, that they start at ten eight and that that would be sufficient.
Yeah, that's the starting one that's listed here. For ten thousand eight hundred dollars, it does meet the requirements.
Yes.
So, we know that number now.
So, it sounds like ten eight is what he said with the, with the base model, which would work.
Which would satisfy the.
Or if we need to know otherwise, what we need to add is that it keeps something different.
But it sounds like, sounds like you know that this, yeah.
For a spraying vehicle, we don't need, just a basic old standard.
Right. For what they're gonna use it for. This would be fun.
And it would be used for most?
For three?
Three departments.
Three departments.
For what?
They're going to use it, so right now for, they use for spraying around the lagoons and spraying along the fence rows, uh, to meet, to make sure that they would meet DNR requirements. Um, so currently they have, what did they say, a two gallon hand sprayer that somebody walks with. And so, Matt Rush has been using his personal four wheeler with a thirty gallon sprayer on the back.
We can't have that.
And we don't want that. So, we want to purchase this and then it could be used between all three, uh, Public Works and Utilities Departments as needed.
Pulling wire is what they talked about when we're pulling wire, stuff we left in departments, those kind of things.
Street departments said they could have a use for it whenever it's not being used for this spraying purpose. So, we, we believe that it would be used by all three departments. And, but specifically to cut down on the personal use of Matt Rush's.
Do we have a tank or are we gonna have to buy a tank too?
I have to go.
They'll have to buy a tank. So, what, do we need to? You guys put a specific dollar amount at ten eight and I know and recognize that it may be taxes and other, I mean, so I think it would be wise to put a not to exceed amount or that amount plus taxes and fees, because if you're actually specific, a dollar amount, it comes into eleven thousand dollars with taxes and delivery, then you technically can't buy it because you bound yourself to a specific amount. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, a revised motion that we go forward with YC Powersports and Columbia buying Polaris five seventy base model at the ten thousand eight hundred plus associated fees and taxes.
Second.
Motion's been made and it's been seconded to purchase the YC five seventy, uh, unit for ten thousand eight hundred dollars, not to exceed taxes. And, and, and other.
Including taxes.
Including taxes and fees, yep. So, it's seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Now with the old business, any old business? Now with the new business section.
Got a list of, 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 oh, sorry.
This is the police officer? I have a, an appointment, uh, first appointments would be for the police department. One being a full-time police officer in Zach Volz. And a part-time police officer in Lan-, Landon, Eunice.
And Zach and Landon are both here today too. Do we need a motion?
Need a motion.
How would we, uh, go forward with these first time appointments for full-time and part-time police officers?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, uh, to accept, uh, Mr. Volz as a full-time officer and Mr. Eunice as a part-time officer. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Do you wanna, do you wanna say that our happy officers?
Sure.
So, they should be this morning.
Let, let me give you just a little background, let me help you out.
Do we have cake?
You should, you should crib Spex a cake anytime you. You got cookies? Michael, stand in place. Zach comes back to Centraia. He's been gone for almost four years, um, serving the great city of St. Louis. Don't ever ask him about it, but he won't say that. Zach started with us as a dispatcher, well, actually started with us as an intern. Um, came on as a dispatcher, part-time, ended up full-time, ended up getting hired by the St. Louis City. Zach's ready to come back home. And, uh, you know, like I said, he's, uh, he's well-prepared for what he's gonna get into and, uh, I'm sure we're not gonna be as excited as what he left. And he says he's okay with that. So, um, I said, Zach feels gonna be a good addition. Um, and, uh, like I said, we're, uh, we're looking forward to it. Landon? Landon might look familiar. Landon might look familiar, he's been around a little bit here and there, um, Landon worked for me in Holsville, and, uh, he, uh, he decided he wanted to come up to a more exciting world of Centaria. You know, we've got two polar opposites here, you know, so, um, but, uh, Landon's looking forward to it, Landon's got a wonderful little family over there, if you're looking at her, or a small one in there that, uh, doesn't make too much noise, I'm impressed. Oh, okay, sorry, but, uh, Landon comes to us with company experience, he's excited, he wants to, he wants to do the right thing in Centaria, and I look forward to it a lot. This actually brings us up to something that we have not been able to say in a very long time since we're pleased, but we're fully set up. Um, and.
What is full staff, how many, how many officers use that?
Is it?
Ten?
It's ten full-time.
Ten full-time.
Ten full-time folks. And that includes.
Yeah.
So, like I said, it gives us fully staff, it gets, allows us, after these guys are fully trained, ready to rock and roll, we're going to be on a twelve-hour schedule as we promised, as we told you we would. Um, this fulfills our second full-time slot that we had for the public safety tax. Um, and, uh, like I said, I think that they're, they're going to do a fine job. You want to hear from them now?
Sure.
Zach, tell them.
I'll ship, you'll have to tell, you'll have to take two hands with him later, now, you're free to speak. Might be your only chance.
What do you want to know? Anything you want to know?
Why, why do you want to be an officer of Centaria, Missouri?
Well, coming from where I come from, and being around honest folks with a nice change of face, so.
Well, please, please, please.
As I propose, you solemn swear.
As I propose, you solemn swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
In the ordinances of the city of Centaria.
In the ordinances of the city of Centaria.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
Will I demean myself?
In the office of police officer.
In the office of police officer.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
Of said city to the best of my ability.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God.
If you would, uh, come over and tell us, tell us what brings you to Centaria, why you want to be an officer of Centaria?
Uh, my name's Landon Eunice, um, as you know, I've got a eight-week-old son, and, uh. Great blood. Lived in, thank you, lived in Boone County my entire life, my family has my brother, my wife, uh, stepson, and my stepfather. Um, just always wanted to serve my community, always wanted to be around, uh, my brother is a firefighter for the city of Columbia, so we've always kind of been in that, uh, protect and serve for our community, uh, my father worked for the city for many years, and this is something that I've been wanting to do for a long time. Um, as stated, coming up here, I wanted to get to a bigger department somewhere that had more options than where I was at, I've been in Holsville for a long few years now, I've been very happy there. But it's time to move up, go to a bigger department, more people, more opportunities, and to follow Bobby, he's a great leader and he's a great boss.
Yeah, I know, but you got the same haircut.
I did the egghead fast a few times, and more and more people come up and put their arm around me.
So, you, you know, you, you know what you're getting into now.
Yes, I, I, I am fully aware of the commitment I made.
Welcome, welcome aboard, okay, I appreciate it.
Landon, what's your question?
Eunice, you know CHS?
If it makes any difference, Don and I have known him since he was the size of his baby boy.
I, Landon, I.
I, Landon Eunice.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will.
Support.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of Centaria.
And the ordinances of the city of Centaria.
That I faithfully demean myself.
That I faithfully demean myself.
To the office of police officer.
And the office of police officer.
Of said city.
Of said city.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
According to law, so help me God.
According to law, so help me God.
Now, the next appointment that I would like to make is to recommend would be, uh, the Missouri Regional Planning Commission, uh, and that would be to reappoint, uh, Tim Greinke to that position.
Make a motion to, uh. Second.
Motion's been passed, seconded, and, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Tim Greinke will stay on the, uh, the Missouri Regional Planning Commission?
Thank you.
Thank you for your service on that as well, Tim, thank you. Now, I'm going to read off, I've got a bunch here that I'm going to do, so pay attention, because we're going to do this in one group. If you have a problem with any of them, hold your hand up really quick. So, uh, for the board of adjustment, we need two people, uh, Heidi Sims resigned, so it's. And we have vacancies, so I'm, I'm, I'm asking Taylor Warbritten to do that, to serve on that committee, as well as Paul Million. Okay? And then, uh, Ben, the, the Board of Commissioners and Enterprise Zone, um, I would, I would like to have Glenn Brown reappointed. Been on there. And then on the Cemetery Advisory Committee, reappoint, uh, Greg Polly, who's on there now, and then, uh, O'Nida Roberts has went off, and we need to replace her, so, uh, I would, Lawrence Dawson, knows Tinker, Dawson, so I'd suggest for that.
Lawrence.
Committee. Officer Centaria Dental Development Authority, Ed Reynolds, the treasurer, he wanted to go off. He was respecting that, he went off, and Paul Million asked about being able to be involved in that, and so I would also call that as well, recommend him.
Which was that?
Uh, that would be for, uh, Centaria Dental Development Authority. Get back. And then, uh, we'll take care of Tim first, uh, I need an arm to replace Jim Leon Planting Zoli. Uh, I'd like to ask Landon Maglin to be appointed to that.
Going to take off?
Committee. And then on the tree board, uh, need to replace Jessica Orsoni, uh, at this time I won't do that, but I don't have anybody for that, so the tree board will be the only one we have left up here.
Excuse me, what was that third one?
Did you hear any, did you hear, did you hear any names that concerned you, I mean, in the capacity, so probably what you need to look at, we're good with that one.
The commotion, we approve all of the appointments that have just been laid out. I don't even know how to say that one.
Seconded, and all the moments that I, that the mayor's made has been, uh, would be approved, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, uh. Next is city administrator.
Our office of management, any questions left now? And then.
Yeah.
I don't see this in the document, but it was listed.
You were pointing.
Yeah, do you all have anything after that?
No.
It didn't get added. So, um, I had a, I had a memo.
Was that about reclaim furniture?
Yeah, I had a memo about that, um, so we've had a request from Brad Page with reclaim furniture, um, the same block of Jenkins Street that they closed for their grand opening, they would like to close, uh, every other Saturday, and I don't know when that would start, but they want to do an event where they have vendors and food and music, and almost like a street, uh, party, um, and it would be every other Saturday, um, so that would need board approval to close that.
The only businesses that beg for sprinklers.
At Dollar Tree.
And what?
Dollar Tree, because that's what they have.
Oh, yeah, because they load out big, yeah.
But they can still.
They can still come in.
Yeah, they still go east to west.
Wanting to have room to turn around.
Yes, and we, and we actually, our street department did a great job putting gravel in where they had already torn up the, the, uh, yard out there, so they have plenty of gravel to stay on now instead of going axle-deep in the mud.
What time should we open?
Uh, it would be like a, he didn't give me times actually, probably an all-day.
Probably five or so.
Maybe.
Eight to five.
Yeah, probably something like that.
I think that's what he had, he had his open houses and started up, it was a really nice event. It was really, really neat to see the other vendors and the other folks here, it was pretty, pretty, pretty successful, man. Really neat what he did with that old church and what he does, which was very, very cool. Now, he may change, I mean, I hope that these events and everything else keep him so busy, he wants to continue to do it every other week, that would be a pretty impressive thing, and, uh, we hope that that's the success he sees. Just some feedback a little, seeing, I don't know if you guys got a chance to get by, but.
Congratulations, Lakey, and that was kind of busy.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, yeah, I got you, just, it's a pretty cool event, just let you know.
Bob, do you guys have any thoughts on closing this one down?
Like I said, only to turn our hands was the businesses, and I think they worked out just fine, they had, I was over there that day, and, you know, I think it was free away, they had just a single axle truck, so what was the deal?
If we're going to do a recurring thing, should we make sure we're not impacting the other businesses?
Yeah, my only, yeah, it's the same concern I have, is the one, the one-off event first would be every other.
Every weekend.
Well, he's only going to be open one weekend a month, so I don't understand the every other week part of it.
I don't know, that's what he also.
No, I think it's still like the people to be moved, it sounds like a farmers market of people do craft stuff like that, and, uh, that's what it seems, as I say, but I don't know what he's talking about.
We're taking this whole business in, old, old building, it made it look very nice, and they have no parking in front at all, so. If they could use the street and not block it, you'd still get through there.
Oh, sorry, I'm wrong, it's the second Saturday of each month.
Just one.
Yeah, just one every month.
One Saturday, not every other Saturday. Once a month.
That's a big difference, isn't it?
Yeah, I thought that was a lot of this, I thought.
That would have been spelled out in my memo, but.
Still think if it's going to be a recurring event, I would just, I would check the other businesses before we. My two cents on it.
Okay, we can check on it.
I, I'm in support of it, but I just want to make sure.
So, we're, we want to go back and check with Pringers and Dollar Tree to make sure that that's acceptable once a month, and they'll know when that's going to be, so.
Right.
They can maybe schedule some, uh, any, any double axle trucks or anything to get bigger, and we'll check some getting there maybe.
Absolutely, when you guys could pass it in the corner of a resolution, like, so that you, like, do it for a year term, and that way it also puts it out there in the public notice, so if you want to have a comment, it'll be out there, you can just do it in the resolution. That way it'll actually serve as its own self-contained cap, because it'll only be good for a year.
Okay. Okay, we'll do, double checking, get back with everybody.
Great.
Yep, and then, uh, our city attorney?
Uh, so, quick update, we do not have municipal court this month because municipal court would have fallen on a holiday, so we do not have municipal court in May, we will in June. Um, on another note, in June, you will also see from me kind of a recap or update of some of the legislation that has passed this last session that will impact cities, um, some of which I will know whether or not it will have been signed by the governor by that point, others won't, so we won't know, but I will at least try to give you a recap of significant pieces of legislation that are going to impact the city and things you might want to be considering, you know, changes, so, that's my update.
Thank you.
Before we move on from this thing, uh, I want to thank you for your session that you made earlier.
Absolutely, thank you.
Very informative.
You guys sitting in front of them?
If they paid me a little more to do this job, I probably would have.
We had food this time.
That's still don't pay my bills.
No, I didn't say there was food.
There was food in Landon, I think.
All right, uh, city clerk business, anything you want to bring, or, no, she's not here.
No. Uh, in the mail meeting this Wednesday, uh, Centaria is hosting at ECNX, uh, starting at six P.M. So, if you had told me that you wanted to go, and you have a confirmation email, then you were signed up. I don't remember who all that was.
I don't know, so say you like.
I have an answer there, I'll slide you.
Uh, yes, we, several people have received phone calls today, uh, from a Melinda Gilmore.
Gilmore.
And, uh, she did not want her, uh, the trash water on her lot table, and the question that you're moving, and that is.
So, the transformer boxes that were painted, the designs were approved by this board, and the locations were approved by this board. Um, Ms. Gilmore and her mom have been in contact with many, many, many of us in the city today, and also in touch with Matt Smith and Mr. Ford as well. And, uh, so I received an email from Rachel Renault, the art teacher, who was, uh, pretty disheartened by it, because uh, it's a project that they put a lot of thought and a lot of effort into, uh, but if it is going to cause such heartache, and Lori Myers, uh, with Central Bank, who is sponsoring the project, uh, we, they both agreed that if this is going to cause such a huge issue, that they could paint that box green and incorporate the design that is already downtown, kind of an abstract design with the overlay, because that box, it's, it sits on the corner of Lakeview and Green Street, and that box, um, is kind of multi-colored, and it'll have an overlay of flowers, so it's supposed to represent Chance Gardens, so the students put a lot of thought and effort into this. Um, but they can kind of combine these two designs, if that's what they need to do, and do the overlay, uh, out silhouette, it's actually silhouette is what they said, of the flowers on the box that's downtown in the square, so if that's what the board would choose to do.
Are they done with this project?
They have several that are done.
Well, the one on Jefferson Street is not done, apparently not.
No, we just aren't done.
This one is not done, but there are two on Jefferson.
Because the paint's falling off.
Oh, wait, wait, oh, no, 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 Lakeview, they have two on Lakeview.
Yeah, only Jefferson and Lakeview, the paint's falling off.
That one is, it hasn't been touched yet again since they were.
Yeah, it's at the alley, yeah.
But it's by the mayor's house, so what the heck?
Right, yeah. It's the last one.
I was talking to the gentleman, they helped me with vandalism, I didn't know, they were just starting the deal, so.
Well, in the high school, the, the one at the high school is done, they repainted that panther, it looks much better, it looks nice.
Then they got the Geo design on the West Street.
On Lakeview.
Yeah.
Yeah, just down for this one. Yeah, so, so they are not finished, but the designs that they have are really good, and they're, they've really put a lot of thought and effort into these designs, and it's unique for us. So, the board would need to make a decision on what you'd like to do.
If they don't want to paint it, they don't paint it.
You mean, to the grains with your son?
My feeling. I don't see why she should have one to paint it if she doesn't want it, and she did list several objections.
Were they asked before they, it was done?
No. For the property.
The city's robbery city, excuse me.
Well, yeah.
And the city made the decision, the board made the decision, it was put in a packet, I mean, but, you know, not everybody reads the notices, but.
I guarantee reporters of this town never knows what you all thought about.
You're probably right, some of the comments though were, paint it back green and let my granddaughter paint it herself. Oh, my.
I spent, I spent four minutes there visiting with her.
Where's the box at?
That's what she said?
Yes. Lakeview and the alley of Green Street.
Between Green and Columbia.
Green and, uh, Green and Central.
Right.
So, what are we doing, just?
We need a motion, because the board had approved the designs to begin with, we would need a motion to.
To take exception to the.
Take exception.
Just left green, I asked to paint it back to green. So. Aye.
Motion, second.
Motion's been made to, uh, take exception to, uh, box equation painted back green, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, it'll be painted green. And we'll move on with rest of the project. Anything else, if they arise.
Where are we with our hearing?
He emailed me Friday, and I emailed him back, and he had some more questions, and they are working on finalization.
Yes.
But definitely don't have.
We don't have a.
What about the Eric Gansit Building and the permits, or to send out bids?
You're still at the same spot where you were.
Yeah, I call them, that's a message, which I'll follow upon in the morning, 'cause I talked to a lady, but I, I don't, I don't wanna know, I got them on the desk in here, but, uh, I'll be calling her back, uh, in the morning, Karen, making as well, that's him up.
I make a motion to be adjourned.
One other thing, I'd like to propose, it comes with the conversation we had, training earlier, proposed we have a work study, or. Work session, uh, at six-thirty, uh, for our next meeting. On the tenth, uh, discuss the cigarettes.
Tobacco twenty-one.
Right, yeah.
Tobacco twenty-one.
Again?
Well, just to talk about, uh.
Just, just.
Because, I mean, it's kind of, there's some things that I think that, way it's written, some things, just, just some things we probably talk about. Not to vote or anything, but just to talk about it, in an open area.
And we could, we would give you a copy of the proposed, um, ordinance prior to, that means everyone would have it, that we'll go over.
When is this gonna be?
The June tenth, at six-thirty, is what I mentioned.
Seconded, then we have a work, uh, session regarding, uh, tobacco twenty-one, motion tenth at six-thirty, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, by the mean of six-thirty, or tenth. Anything else, if they arise.